Okay, you're live. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town council meeting on this Tuesday, January 19th. If you will kindly join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Evening. We are joined by members of MDC. I want to welcome everyone. Commissioner DiBella.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Commissioner Suizy. And let's see. Who else do we have? And Chris Martin.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. So we will move right into the presentation. And I believe we have a slide. There we go.
So. This is Chris Martin. I have some brief comments to make and can run through the the presentation. I know there may be some other discussion that people would like to have, but. And I'm not familiar with Zoom. We usually use WebEx. I know you can see me, I think, but I can't. I can't see you. So, but I'm ready to start. If if you folks would like me to do that.
Yes, we are ready for you. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for for having us. And I'm the the districts. My name is Chris Martin, and I'm the Director of Finance, Chief Financial Officer for the district. And I'm finishing up my second year with the district. And I wanted to start by thanking the town for supporting our efforts last year with the the Integrated Plan. And the letter that you wrote is very helpful because one of our one of our biggest issues in the budget each year is how we frame and progress towards satisfying the governmental orders from both deep and EPA. So so really, we have, I think it's five slides here, but I won't go word for word on each of them. But and I know this this conversation is about the budget. We've also come out to the town at different towns at different times to to speak with with council. And I just wanted to say that, you know, we had 12 meetings this year that were open to the public. Some were, you know, budget meetings, budget workshops, some meetings with the the member, the member towns. And Rocky Hill was well represented. John Mayer attends just about all of those meetings. And Commissioner Suizy, in particular, has been, I think, a very good advocate for the town. He's vigilant in his his efforts to to support certainly the pension plan and and other aspects relating to cost to the member towns. But I know there are other folks that that may want to say something about some of these issues. But if I could just get through what I think are the the things relevant to the budget, I think it would be good because I can do that, I think, rather efficiently. First off, we we think the budget on the first slide here, I'll I'll speak to the fact that the budget was, I think, a fairly conservative effort this year, one in which we listened to the input from the the towns, and we recognize that the towns were, for the most part, looking at zero increases. So we we heard that, and I think that that's reflected in the in the budget outcome. And so so there certainly were, just like you're confronted with the pandemic and some of the the issues presented, we certainly are affected like the, in some ways, in a similar fashion, but in in different fashion also. So. In terms of that, the what we we found to be surprises here, on the revenue side, we we saw some volatility in our revenues this year, the likes of which we haven't seen. And keep in mind that that the long term assumption on consumption has been nationally about 4% lower each year. And this year, we in the budget, the 21 budget, we we took a pause there, and we budgeted for flat consumption based on these volatile revenues that we're seeing. Obviously, we aren't seeing the revenue from the public sector, you know, and from some of the manufacturing and commercial businesses. But what we had was a very nice surprise in that residential consumption at this point has 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 offset much of that volatility and that loss on the other side. And obviously, we're following the governor's guidance on deferring interest and and dunning charges. So those were things that we had to contend with in the budget. But even with that, we think we did well, and we've made conservative assumptions. And so we had good fortune, not just with revenues, but we also had good fortune from the standpoint of having had a a premium in the Clean Water Project that was from the 2013 revenue bonds that allowed us to address some one time expenses in the budget. And we can talk more about that. I know Commissioner Suizy may want to talk a little bit more about that. But but basically, that was $23.5 million, most of which was allocated to things like the Glastonbury lawsuit, a one time deficit in our Internal Service Fund of $6.5 million, and and things like that, also some money that had to be paid back to the Pension Fund for land development expenses in Glastonbury. But with with all the different things that occurred during the budget, we were able to come through and have a 0% increase in ad valorem, less than a 1% increase, three quarters of a percent increase in the typical water bill for a customer that uses 100 and 100 CCFs per year. And so so we were, I think we were guided prudently by policies that we put in place for things like fund balance. And just like each of our member towns, MDC is faced with a population of employees that is 80% union and is largely nearing retirement age. We have more than, I think, or close to half of our employees could retire over the next five years. So it really doesn't make sense for us not to fully fund our ADEC payment for pension and OPEB, both of which we did. And so so in terms of the budget, no increases in any of our customer service charges, no increase in the Clean Water Project charge. And we continue on a long term basis as we as we manage our headcount to to do more with less. And in this budget, we we plan for, you know, 25 positions to be eliminated. So I think that's that's those are the the major, some of the major issues. There's other things we can talk about, like we restored funding for 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 Riverfront. And of course, that came with a cost. But but really, the only increase is this this increase in the water rate of 8 cents. And if you you look to subsequent pages, you will see, of course, no change in ad valorem. Remember, however, that because the the town ad valorem charge is based on a rolling average of your pro rata share of the tax collections that are aggregated for all the eight member towns, that there is a small shift in your your piece of that ad valorem increase. So just remember that. And I think you'll see like a $30,000 change in your ad valorem for that that reason. If you look to the third page, you'll see those rate charges and what that change was in the water use charge from 397 to 405. And again, it shows a 2% increase in the water use charge. But remember, if a typical customer's water bill comprises those other charges, it's a 0.75% increase, that 8 cents on the water. So we thought that was a pretty good outcome and pretty very, very close to 0% all the way around. There's a few other pages that show the breakout of the budget. And again, our relative standing among water companies in the state of Connecticut, others that are similarly sized or organized as MDC, such as Aquarian, Connecticut Water, Regional Water Authority. And our water charge compares very favorably to those other entities. So that's kind of a high level summary of the budget. I know there are some folks that that have questions. And I know also there may be some comments from, I would invite our CIO, Kelly Shane is on the phone. Our CEO, Scott Jealousen, is on the phone. And Commissioner Suizy, as I mentioned, is on the phone. So I didn't want to to take take away from any opportunity that people might want to take to ask us questions.
Before we get started, I just want to apologize to Mr. Jealousen. I thought that I heard someone mention that you were on the on the Zoom. And I just saw a phone number at the bottom of the screen. So welcome, and thank you for coming.
No, no problem. Thank you. I I just would like to say, you know, again, as Chris mentioned, we thank we thank our commissioners from Rocky Hill, Pusha Suizy, and Rich Fasino. Both of them are outstanding commissioners and and represent the town extremely well. I know that our chairman's on the phone. So with that, and Chris's presentation, really, we just opened it up to questions. If anyone has any questions, and I know Commissioner Suizy would like to say a few words. So I just open it up to the to the council at this point.
Thank you. Well, shall we go around for questions? Why don't we start? I'm going to just look at my screen. Counselor Levine, do you have any questions?
I don't know if I have anything specific. Thanks for the the presentation, though. I I guess one question just came to mind. I know we talked about in the past is the ability to, I know there's a bottling plan in Bloomfield that you're selling water and trying to generate extra revenue. What's kind of the status of that initiative to to sell water? Do A, do we have the water? I you know, when I think we're out of any type of drought situation, would be my guess. So do we have the water supplied to sell and B, you know, kind of what's going on with that?
I can tell I could. This is Scott Jealousen. I can take that. So the initiative is, you know, Niagara has, we track, you know, all of our our large users in terms of of water consumption. But Niagara is typically, you know, they range anywhere from 500,000 gallons a day up to a million gallons a day. We have more than enough capacity to to serve them. And we have no problem. As you know, the drought, they just announced, I think it was yesterday, that the officially the drought was over. And the challenge, we're in the middle right now, and we're going to present at the Water Bureau tomorrow night to talk about drought triggers. And here's the challenge with triggers and droughts. So and I'll use the example of 2016. August of 2016, the state of Connecticut Governor's Office declared a drought and asked for people to reserve and and stop, you know, and and voluntary reserve use of water. The MDC was 95% capacity at that point. And the problem with the drought triggers that have been developed by the Governor's Office is it's really been driven by groundwater. So we're really talking about wells, not surface water reservoirs. Now, there are some reservoirs that are very small and very shallow, like New Britain, like Manchester, and some of the other private water utilities have very small reservoirs. We don't have that problem. And typically, we don't get into our first drought trigger, which is 75% until later in the in the season, like October, November. And by that time, like would happen again, this drought, that we 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 start to see that rainfall and that snowfall, and we we never ever hit our 75%. If you look at 1967 drought, you look at 1980 drought, you look at 2008 drought, you look at 2016 drought, and you look at this drought, the MDC never, based on use, if you compare, you know, the water consumption across those years, we never hit our drought triggers. So we have to look at drought differently than others. When others are dealing with real significant drought and really need to restrict water consumption in the July, August, early September timeframe, the MDC hasn't even hit its first drought trigger. So we have plenty of water in selling to Niagara. They have bounced around. They have told us that that their water consumption is really was really, we were expecting it to to increase because of the COVID. We're expecting that because of bottled water and the the need for bottled water that we would see an increase. And we did see a spike. We saw a spike in the in the March timeframe of last year. But then we saw a leveling off in in April and May. And what they have told us was, because the majority of stores that sell their water were putting limitations on the number of of cases you could buy, it really affected their sale of their water. So they're they're, like I said, they bounce around on average, but they're in that range of anywhere from 500,000 to, you know, 900,000 gallons per day on average. And we track it, and we have, we're having no problems. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that that's great. Are there other companies that are looking to use something similar, which would generate more revenue and therefore help everybody's cost a little bit, or?
Well, there there are, there are, you know, continuing efforts by the MDC and 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 your towns. I mean, our towns are our best advocates. Typically, a developer, you know, comes to the door of the the Development Office of our town first. And so there has been some discussions, as you know, there's been a lot of development in in certain parts of our district. And so as as Chris Martin mentioned, you know, residential is is based on COVID is a great, is a great development. It always has been. In Hartford, there's been a lot of reclassification of office space into residential. We'll see where this goes with the COVID and working from home and how that impacts development. It's a kind of an interesting time in how, you know, office space will be utilized in the future. But we don't have any, you know, Niagras of the world, you know, knocking on a door at this point. So it's it's probably, I would say, for, you know, for that kind of a industry, it's probably a little bit of a risky time for any big corporation to make any big decisions on on moving. But right now, no.
Scott, Bill DiBella. We have been dealing with Metro Hartford Alliance on a significant looking at a significant opportunity for the state and the region in biotech industry, looking at Hartford, they've been recruited by Metro Hartford Alliance and are dealing with now. So there are issues, there are people looking at that opportunity. Connecticut in general hasn't had growth in its 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 population over the last 10, since 2008, we haven't had growth. In the last year, I believe it's 25,000 people have moved into the state of Connecticut, which is having a significant impact on the our our financial situation in Connecticut. If you look at this, the state of Connecticut's report on on revenues, we were projecting a $5 billion shortfall over the next three years. We're down of somewhere in the area of $608,000, $8 million is is a deficit. And we we haven't been really provided with federal stimulus money. And that's going to come now. They're starting to talk about stimulus money revolving to the state. So this is probably the best outlook that I can remember in the last 20 years or 25 years of where the state of Connecticut is is going, going. MDC, in terms of water revenues, and you're talking about, do we have enough water? 15, 15 years ago, Scott, 20 years ago, we are selling 65 million gallons a day of water. We sell roughly 50 million gallons now. That's a drop of 30, 15 million gallons. So most of it was the result of conservation. Remember, a toilet had, was it nine gallons to flush a toilet? Now it's one and a half. You get your washing machines, your dishwashers and everything else. That conservation, by virtue of technology, has dropped our consumption rate by 15 million gallons of water a day. So if we don't sell more water, we we have an offset in terms of cost, and we our costs go up because we don't have that revenue coming in. So we've we've dealt with a lot of that issue over the last five years. As I would say, five years or six years, we've reduced our operating budgets by virtue of manpower. We've gone from 503 employees to the budget we're adopting this year of 454. So that's a significant drop, and that was done by increased work capacity, dealing with the unions, changing union working rules and and tech introduction of technology. So we're dealing with those issues, but we still need more revenue to drive our water rates, to keep our water rates up, because we have 40, in excess of 40 billion gallons of water in two reservoirs. We have plenty of water. The issue that was articulated and purported to the the general public that we're in trouble of safe water. We've got more water than anybody in the state of Connecticut. Our issue is we've got to want to sell more of it. So like everybody else, a pandemic's a very difficult time to have economic expansion. We're having restrict, we're reducing our expansion in a pandemic. We've got millions of people out of work in in the country. But Connecticut's doing pretty well when you look at the rest of the country.
No, I was for, you know, trying to generate more revenue. So I I wasn't saying we're out of water. I was, it's good to hear that you can, you know, comfort everybody that we're we're doing fine in that sense. So that's that's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Sharmit, did you want to add anything? You're on mute.
Sorry, sorry about that. Yes, Mayor. Question directed to the the CEO, Scott Jealousen. Over the last several years, you've talked to us about cutting costs and managing managing your your company with a tighter with tighter controls. And I see that the staff is down. But you have mentioned about removal of some assets or things that were costing you, like I believe a hydro plant. Is that out of the system, the hydro plant?
Yes. So good question. Thank you, Scott Jealousen. So absolutely. So the one thing that we have done, and and I have said this before, and I'll say it again, accident, right? We have not reduced staffing to save money. We have actually changed the way we do business, which allows us to reduce staffing, which saves us money. There's a significant difference there. There's a lot of energy and effort that's gone into actually changing the way we do things. And we mentioned, you know, multitasking. So we we take, we've taken jobs, and we've we've converted them into in one job. We've taken, you know, 100 and some odd jobs and turned them into 12. That has allowed us to do certain, and and with the specific question about hydro, we had a real, you know, a 1967 agreement with the Colbrook Reservoir. And the Colbrook Reservoir is basically, it's a reservoir that we entered into an agreement with the Army Corps. And it was, I wasn't there, so I I don't know the the logic. But we know that in building the Goodwin Dam in the 1950s, after the 55 flood, the the our our Goodwin Dam, which was going to be a 6 billion gallon drinking water reservoir for emergency use, was unfortunately cut in half because the Army Corps came to the MDC and said, sorry, after the 55 flood, we need to build a flood control reservoir right up, you know, a mile upstream from from where yours is. And so what happened in in 55 and then played out through the 60s was our drinking water reservoir, we probably didn't know it at the time, but our drinking water reservoir, the Goodwin Reservoir, would never, ever, ever, ever be a drinking water reservoir, mainly because the Army Corps and how it operates. So as you can imagine, during this whole drought trigger thing, the the goal of of a drinking water reservoir is to save water, is to is to is to keep it. Do not release it from the reservoir. The Army Corps is has a completely different role. Their their role is to release water, which dumps into our, you know, our pool. And there's no way to keep it. You know, our our pool is so small, it can't store the water that they're releasing, so it goes over the dam. So in the middle of a drought, when you're looking for that storage and that excess capacity, it's gone. It's been released. And so so because of that fact, and because of the fact that what the MDC did in the in the 80s was, which was a great thing, it was to put in hydro facilities at the Goodwin and and Colbrook Facility. And in at one point, we were making, you know, 21, 22 cents per kilowatt hour. And as you know, today, we're making about 2 and 1/2, 3 cents a kilowatt hour. Given the fact that that infrastructure was so old and it needed to be replaced, we needed about a $6 million renovation to improve the system to make it worthwhile. Analysis, which is a like, just a cost benefit analysis, it made no sense to replace that infrastructure. So with those two facts, we said, okay, we don't really have the, we're paying for something, which is about a million dollars a year to the Army Corps. We're paying for a million dollars a year to 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 generate revenue in hydro and to have the excess capacity for an emergency. And neither of those are true. So why are we still there? So I brought this to the board in September of 18 and basically said, our agreement ends in 2019, and we need to decide now whether we're going to stay. Because if we stay, our legal position was, we would be entrenched in the agreement forever. The the debt service on the original dam structure was was ending for the last payment was for September, I'm sorry, was for 2019. It was $250,000. And our position was, when that debt service payment's over, we, the project as defined in the agreement is over, and therefore, we're leaving. So we started immediately, based on support from the board, to exit the the agreement. We removed all of our infrastructure, including wire, literally wire from from the conduits. That that obviously, we want it to be gone before the tax, the the local town tax from Colbrook would would apply in the October timeframe of 2020. And so our goal was to get out completely of the infrastructure, vacate the facility. We are right now in the middle of, you know, discussions, legal discussions with the with the Army Corps about their position versus our position as it relates to our obligation under the agreement. So what we what we did is part of that, is part of the budget, is to protect our 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 towns. We typically would have budgeted about a million and change for this payment to the Army Corps. And our our real concern was not budgeting that. And because if we did happen to lose a legal battle, we would wind up having to come back and 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 asking for more money, double the money, triple the money. And as you can imagine, any legal argument with with the federal government could take up years. So we felt it important that we reserve money. And we did use reserves for that to make sure that we could not impact our impact our our customers anymore than we already have. So so as Chris Martin mentioned, in this budget, with a 0% increase in ad valorem and a less than a 1% increase in the water rate, there has been so many good things that we have done to make that happen. You know, 25 positions is, you know, it represents about 2 and 1/2 million dollars, plus or minus. Never mind the OPEB expenses for the future. And we are, we are constantly, vigilantly finding ways to do more with less. We we installed 10 miles of water main. Now imagine in 2006, Uh, we, we installed ten miles of water main. Now imagine in two thousand six, we had uh seven hundred employees and we probably installed, I would bet to guess, we probably installed less than a half a mile of water main in two thousand six. And in two thousand twenty, we have half of the employees and we have installed ten miles of water main. And so again, we're utilizing a on-call system with contractors, uh, which is what we refer to as our accelerate, accelerated water main program. And we simplify the process. Uh, we're not going through a full-blown design. We're simply um developed, we pre-qualify contractors and then we develop a very um minimal specifications and drawings enough for our qualified contractors to actually give us a price, bid it to those contractors and, and get the project started. So again, we're not blindly cutting positions. We're, we're, we're utilizing strategies on how we do things that will help us save money. Hopefully that answered your question.
It, it, it does. So there's potential for even more savings if everything goes well in the Army Corps negotiations, which is promising. But I, and then finally, just one quick question. I'll throw it to Commissioner Sweetsie and wherever it ends up. But uh, is there any update on the Pratt Whitney State of Connecticut saga?
Pratt and Whitney.
Yeah. Yeah. So let me just clarify that. So um, so Pratt and Whitney is similar to the state landfill, but they are paying, they are, they are paying. Um, and they are paying, um, we changed the rate structure for everyone. Um, you know, we were charging everyone thirteen cents per gallon for, for um, for hazardous waste discharges to the, to the uh, to the plants through the, through the pipes. Um, and also if you truck that same waste in, uh, you pay thirteen cents. We have, we have created a rate structure uh that gives basically uh the Pratt and Whitney and the state the same uh reduction based on volume. And so basically the state of Connecticut owed us four million dollars a year and Pratt Whitney owed us eight. Pratt and Whitney, based on their, the, the new structure, their uh rate structure, they're paying us three point six roughly, at three point eight million dollars a year. And the state of Connecticut owes us approximately two million dollars a year. Um, we have not uh received any monies from the state yet. However, um, we have a very positive uh, um,
Negotiation.
Positive, well, it's, yes, it's, it's even probably further than negotiations bill. We have agreed with the, with the, with, we have agreed with DEEP and we have agreed with the uh, the AG's office to develop an agreement, a um, uh, and a, an agreement between the two parties to actually settle um the terms of how they would pay and what they would pay would be determined by uh the governor's office uh and OPM. So the, so the agreement has been written. Uh, the agreement uh has been uh submitted um to MDC, to DEEP, to the, to the AG's office. Uh, now we're just waiting for the dollar amount uh that uh would, the state would be willing to offer us. They presently owe us about fifty million dollars for back um, back uh charges, which is that four million dollars a year. And uh, and then it turned to two million dollars in two thousand nineteen, I believe. And um, and then uh for going forward, it would be quote, two million dollars a year. We have, the last uh discussion uh our attorney, Chris Stone, had had uh with um, uh, with the powers to be at the state was that uh we were going to see a proposal or an offer from OPM. Uh, and, but we have not seen anything yet.
Thank you.
So we're still in the negotiation.
Counselor Thoreau, do you have a question?
Yes, I just have one uh short question. Uh, you mentioned in your presentation that you were deferring interest in dunning letters uh for customers that can't pay. Um, do you have a program, uh, some kind of, of grants or payment plans or whatever for people who e- even without the insurance of the dunning can't pay?
We, we're uh, members of, of Operation Fuel and uh CEO Scott Jellison serves on their board and uh, well, that's a, a program that um allows us to um, you know, to, to take care of some of those people who are unable to pay.
So they are able to get uh help through project, uh, through operation, for the operation of fuel?
Also, certain foundations in different towns have uh, have relief for people that can't make payments. In other words, within their town. Foundations, I think there's two or three foundations out there that provide uh help with people with their water bills.
Thank you.
Uh, if I could just add to that, the, yeah, so we do have payment plans. The MDC uh has always had payment plans and uh, besides not dunning, besides not dunning, uh, we have uh, the ability to develop payment plans. But uh, both the chairman and Chris are correct. Uh, we, we are part of Operation Fuel. The MDC uh basically donates fifty thousand dollars a year to um, to our customers to give, it's like pay for money, right? It's our money. We're basically forgiving up to fifty. There has been discussions over the years with the, with the EPA and the states about developing um a rate structure for um low income. Now thi- this is um, this is regulated by the federal government and the states. And it's impossible for us at this point to create a rate structure based on income that would completely uh contradict our whole Avalon system. So there has been discussion over the years and every year there seems to be uh, you know, hope uh that will, will some way get EPA to agree to a, for, for the utilities, wastewater and water to, to create a structure um for low income within their um, within their uh regions. Uh, and if that does occur, then we would be able to create some program that would allow us to provide relief uh, uh, if, if persons qualified for the program.
Thank you. Counselor Greenspan, do you have a question?
Uh, no question at this time. I'd just like to thank MDC for uh, for coming to present tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Molaro.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, just a really quick question. You mentioned the, the risk around um, we're having a low demand, uh, lots of water, but less use, less uh folks uh using water because of a number of folks in Connecticut. So I guess around the same um topic of risk, uh, is there any long-term risks around the infrastructure itself that we have to plan for? Anything that's antiquated or something that we haven't fully discussed? We have to watch out. That could affect my next three years, five years.
This is Scott Jellison. So we are, as you know, um, the MDC is in the middle of a, uh, I guess we'd say a three billion dollar upgrade to our sewer system. Um, we also have a antiquated water system and, and that's why it was so important uh for us to install new water mains. Um, as you know, I just mentioned uh ten miles a year. Um, we have fifteen hundred miles of water main. So if we install ten miles a year, uh, you know, a hundred and fifty divided by ten is um, fifteen hundred divided by ten is a hundred and fifty years. It's going to take us a hundred and fifty years to, to replace all the water mains and every water main that we, you know, it just gets older and older. So yes, absolutely. We need a program. We're in the middle of right now uh finalizing a master plan for the water side. Uh, and it would include not just um the pipes in the street, but, but the, the, but the water system that treats um the, the uh, the drinking water. And so that's our West Hartford Filter uh plant and our Bloomfield plant. And um, you know, short timeframe. This is a number of different options. But let's assume the Bloomfield Treatment Plant could serve everyone because as we know, um, West Hartford Filter can, can really treat about eighty, ninety million gallons a day. Bloomfield can treat about forty. That's a hundred and forty, but we're only using, you know, on average forty-six, forty-seven. So the real question for ourselves is uh, what's the trend? The trend is down. The trend is four percent a year. So does it make sense to rebuild West Hartford just because we have West Hartford? Or does it make sense to rebuild and build something different? And what different might be is that we utilize Bloomfield, we expand Bloomfield, we bring in a new raw water main from Neepog uh reservoir, which would be also fed from Barkanstead. And then we would possibly um have to utilize West Hartford Treatment Plant as more of like a, a transition between pressure zones between uh the Bloomfield High, High Area and Windsor and, and the uh, and the, and the Hartford area. Um, so we might need to, over the next five years, we might need to spend four or five million dollars to start to plan and start to uh bu- put the infrastructure in that would allow us to transition to whatever master plan we select. So yes, absolutely. We will be uh spending money in the next five years. Um, in the next twenty years, we'll have to do a major um renovation to our drinking water system.
Um, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, Bill DeBella, uh, I, I think Scott uh points out well, one of our major problems is it's a problem we're living with all over the country. We've got a massive infrastructure problem in this country, whether it's electric grid, whether it's sewer, whether it's water. It's, it's dramatic. And I'll give you a perfect example of the, on the sewer side. Um, the federal government up until nineteen seventy-eight, we entered into a program just like we do with the interstate highways. We've got a eighty percent subsidy and we put up twenty. In nineteen seventy-eight, the federal government got out, that's almost fifty years ago, got out of the, got out of that subsidy situation. They provide no subsidies to the, the uh sewer side of our, our budgets. Um, and consequently, for the last fifty years, we haven't seen that kind of subsidy. And as you know, infrastructure, especially when it's underground, you don't see it. It's out of my, out of sight, out of mind. And we've got a serious, serious problem on both the water and sewer side, not just in the greater Hartford region, the whole country. So that the federal government has to get back in that looks like in at least a short run, they're talking about a massive infrastructure program. But it's got to be similar to the state, uh interstate highway program that still has an eighty, eighty, twenty subsidy. So yeah, infrastructure is going to be a major problem uh as we go down, down the road. We've spent, what Scott, about one point five billion dollars on infrastructure already in the clean water project. And uh, we've got a long way to go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Counselor Prakash, do you have a question?
Uh, no questions at this time, Mayor. Thank you. And I um, thank MDC uh for taking the time to uh, come to this meeting and uh informing us. Thank you.
Counselor Jeff, do you have a question?
Yeah. First, I'd just like to thank uh some of the efforts that you've been making um towards greater transparency. I think some of the videos that you started rolling out maybe last year um that were uh helpful and putting together short clips to help explain um some of the functions of the MDC. As well as some of the recent tours of the video tour of the treatment plant here in Rocky Hill uh have been helpful, not just keeping us informed, but of course the overall public. Uh, it's certainly a lot easier to have um, you know, those videos out there that people can reference on demand. So I think that's um, a complaint that we had in the past, but I think you've done a pretty good job uh addressing it. So I wanted to thank that, uh, thank you for that. Um, and I just had a few, what I think it should be quick questions. There is one item where we're tapping um a reserve to take out five point two million. Uh, how does that leave the, and, and I think, you know, we, we understand that it's a, it was a non-traditional year, so um, probably a good thing. You know, this year might also be tough depending on when everybody feels, you know, comfortable getting back out in the world and it's going to take a while to um, you know, put things together on the economic side. Uh, do you really think that's going to be a one-time tapping your reserve and, and what shape are those reserves in um now after we've done that, um, taken out that five point two million?
So uh, this is uh Chris Martin. Uh, we, we, um, we feel um like we're on pretty solid ground there. In two thousand nineteen, we adopted a formal fund balance policy uh which really covers the general fund, which is sewer. And uh, the policy calls for uh the district to maintain thirty to thirty-five percent uh fund balance, which I know for a local government sounds high. Actually for utility, it's fairly typical. Um, but with our expectations for the current year, uh, what we see, uh, we, we think we're, we're, we're going to be in, in, in able to, just to stay above that thirty percent level. And, and as I mentioned earlier, we had the good fortune here to be able to transfer and reimburse the pooled cash for expenses that were uh, that were paid on behalf of the Clean Water Project for funds that were segregated and uh in the um, uh, from the, the premium from the two thousand thirteen bonds. And, and Bond Council actually encouraged us to reimburse the, the uh pooled cash for those expenses. So not all of that twenty-three and a half million has been allocated. So when we finish our audit and we're on a calendar year basis, unlike you folks, so we expect uh more of that to flow to fund balance on both the water and the sewer side. So again, we, we think we're, we're operating uh on a pretty conservative basis. And we had the opportunity to take care of on a one-time basis. We didn't have to come back and say, we need to borrow nine million for a lawsuit settlement. Uh, and so I think it was um between, between that um, the, the residential water usage and the ability to take money uh and reimburse the, 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 the pooled cash. We, we really had a couple of really major positive developments that, that I think helped us. But longer term, I think we're, we're pretty well positioned. Our reserves should be solid and, and we should be able to uh, to, to stay the course with uh, with, with whatever comes our way. Of course, you know, we, we, no one thought we'd be in this position a year ago. But um, you know, we just happened to have weathered it so far pretty well.
Chris Martin, it's the, I, I'd just like to add, I'm sorry, Scott Jellison, I'd just like to add to what Chris said. You know, this uh, when we, when we developed a fund balance, uh, we had a lot of discussion with our town finance directors and there was a lot of pushback. Um, because the MDC feels it's different mainly because of how much money it borrows. And, and so a fund balance policy that which was recommended by our advisor um, um, really helps us in the market. And um, so, so even though uh there was a lot of pushback, we felt strongly that the fund balance needed to be between thirty and thirty-five percent. And this year we're at thirty-eight percent. So without, you know, it, it was, you know, this is, it's, and I appreciate the comments, transparency. It was impossible for the MDC to keep that, that uh money, right? Because we, we agreed that we needed to be no higher than thirty-five percent and being, being at uh, uh thirty-eight percent, we felt we, it was our job to give that money back to our towns. So that's why that money was given back and we very, feel very comfortable and confident that uh it's not going to impact us at all.
Thanks. And then um, touching on um what Chris Martin, you've kind of wrapped up talking about the long, the long-term view. Um, it seems like there's, there's some interesting trends uh that are at play where we are, you know, through innovation retirements, you're reducing headcount almost, it sounds like by fifty percent um coming up, or I guess you're, you'll be replacing some of those folks who retire. Uh, then we also have the, perhaps the long-term trend of more people working from home. I'm not sure how that exactly plays in with office buildings not, not opening up or not. Um, but the last time I, you had done a pres- a presentation, we saw some, you know, from our perspective, pretty scary looking, probably from yours too, some pretty scary looking charts that, and when we're thinking about twenty, thirty years, uh, some pretty big, you know, it's not exactly hockey stick, but it's a pretty uh scary hump, you know, coming up as terms of the the budget and some of the um, you know, the, the funding that you're going to need for these projects. How, how do we feel moving forward? Um, what position are we in over the next, you know, number of years? Cause we had seen some pretty scary projections the last couple of years. Do we think this is more of a one-off uh belt tightening because of a, because of COVID and everything? Or can we anticipate that this type of budget with a smaller increase might be more of the norm moving forward? Or can you even, do you even have the data to say?
Yeah, I think it's difficult to say with, with precision, but um, I, I think over time, we uh, and, and that's why it was so helpful that we got the, the town to provide the support uh with a letter to, to DEP and the state to, to kind of support our efforts because uh we think that it's, Scott is, his because, uh, we think that it's, Scott has, has reminded people continually about, you know, does it make sense to build another tunnel? Or, you know, should we be doing more for our infrastructure? And it seems like that message is, has gotten through a little bit. So we're, we're adjusting, I think, and we're looking at, uh, you know, various outcomes. But I think the out, the outlook for the Clean Water Project is, is probably shifting a little bit. And we're preparing for that. And part of that preparation is to make room for things that, that Scott mentioned are gonna need, be needed on the, on the water side in terms of infrastructure. So, um, the, the level of reserves that we have, I mean, I think we, we know that that gives us a little bit of a buffer. And, um, our approach in the capital markets has been well received. And looking at our future borrowing plans, I think, uh, I think that we should, I, I think we should find, I think we'll all find that, uh, as we get more and more into it, these reserves will help us, uh, sustain that debt service.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, uh, Chris Duffy, this is Ray Sweets. I also want you to realize though, this zero increase. From two thousand thirteen, we found a twenty-three and a half million bank deposit that was in our account that we hadn't used from two thirteen. Without that, I don't think you would have had a zero increase this year. Because we paid one point four million back to the pension fund, we paid six hundred thousand dollars of interest. All this would have had to come from the towns paying these payments. A nine hundred million, I mean, a nine million dollar settlement to the non-member towns, mostly Glass and Berry. It was about a couple of million in legal bills, seven million in settlement. Uh, we paid a lot of one-time things off. If we didn't come up with that twenty-three and a half million, which we're not gonna have, we're gonna have about five million of it left over into next year. The key is if the MDC gets a fair settlement with the state of Connecticut on the fifteen million they owe us, that would again keep us, that it's actually, that money goes back to the towns in, uh, their payments. So, you know, you could have a couple of years of very low increases. But without a fair settlement and without that settlement, next year could be tough again because you got four and a half, I mean, you got four hundred and fifty employees, four sixty, whatever, I mean, come on, you're not, we're not gonna be cutting employees that much anymore. Uh, and, you know, I, I had made a number of motions to make some other cuts at the budget and they didn't pass. So there is gonna be some surpluses next year, but looking out over ten years, it's not gonna get much better.
Thank you.
And, and I, I just, this is Scott Jelsoft, and I just, that's why for the Avalorum, this is so important. Uh, Chris, Chris Martin mentioned this, but, uh, without the support of our towns, uh, we're very close to coming to a resolution with the state of Connecticut on the integrated plan. So the one thing we can do to stabilize Avalorum is to stabilize debt service. And debt service is erratic, uh, because every, basically every, every two years, we're having to bond and borrow, you know, seventy-five million dollars, forty million sewer, thirty million water. So our goal is to shift that borrowing for debt on the capital side for Avalorum and shifting that to the integrated plan. And that would be paid for by the, the Clean Water Program and the Clean Water Surcharge. And our goal is that the, the customer is not gonna see any difference. They're, they're paying what they're paying now. It, it's just a matter of what, what we use the money to spend on. Instead of building big capacity like, like for example, you know, in your town, we've spent fifty million dollars to increase the capacity to plant. Well, that's because we got a lot of water flowing into the syst- into the system that we don't want. If we had long enough period of time to get the water out, we would not have had to increase the capacity and spend that fifty million dollars. There needed to be improvements in Rocky Hill anyways, but the point is, our goal is to take the forty million dollars a year that Avalorum is funding and shift it to integrated planning and use that money to fix the existing infrastructure rather than building bigger capacity. That's really the biggest difference between integrated planning and the other program that we're involved in. So our goal is to try and find pieces and parts that will help us balance, um, and try and mitigate the increases, um, to, to, to our Avalorum budget.
And, and, and we're gonna need help from the federal government like everybody else is in the country. I, I, I try to explain that to you in the initial, uh, the initial discussion on infrastructure and federal funding. And it's not only us, it's the whole country. So I think you're gonna see some future support and help on that side from the federal government that we haven't had in the past.
Well, that would be beneficial, certainly, Mr. Commissioner DiBella. Um, Commissioner Sweets, I just, I wanna thank you, um, for your uh, continuing advocacy for our town. I know that it's been an incredibly difficult and unprecedented year for you, all of you to be working, um, um, in this environment and, uh, trying to deliver a fair budget. And we certainly appreciate all of the work that you, Commissioner DiBella, and others have been doing. Um, you did happen to make a comment though with respect to, uh, making a number of recommendations, um, as that pertains to cuts. I'm wondering if you could just kind of briefly speak to, you know, did the commission fully review all of the areas in terms of making cuts and maybe just explain that a little bit to us?
Well, I definitely think this year, under, uh, Chairman DiBella, we were much more open, the Finance Committee met time after time, but Bill also opened up meetings where the full commission could meet and discuss the budget pro con and everything. So this year was more open than the twenty-something years I've been there. I mean, it's always been open, but this year, a lot more, I believe, a lot more commissioners, uh, got involved. Another thing, before I get to your question, Chairman DiBella also, in the past week, we had a first meeting, uh, of a strategic, uh, committee. And we're also going to be looking at three or four other possibilities of bringing new funds into the MDC over the next few years. Maybe only one of these will come to actually happen, but whatever, we're, we are looking at other, uh, avenues for more revenue, uh, to come in. And Bill has brought three or four good ideas in front of the commission. I think, uh, Chris Martin, Scott, Bill, uh, Bud Solemy, who's the chairman of the Finance Committee, did a great job on the town side of the budget. On, on the water side, we did have a small increase of three-quarter percent, which I had made some motions. I thought we could get it down to zero. But in Rocky Hill, Rocky Hill has about forty percent of condominium and apartment residents, residents in Rocky Hill, about forty percent live in condos. Just yesterday, I got a call from, uh, Imagineers, uh, the Oaks, let's take, I can take a bunch of them, but the Oaks right across from the big Y, the condominium, they had just started getting the bill of two hundred and forty dollars a month added to their bill. So probably forty percent of the people, condos in Rocky Hill or homeowners are gonna have another two percent increase because we changed some of the rates on, um, the size. I don't know, Scott can tell you exactly, but the, uh, the pipes in the water, there's new charges.
Fire protection.
Yesterday, it was like a two and a half percent increase for them, plus the three-quarters, so it's a little over three percent. So a lot of the people in Rocky Hill are gonna have more like a three percent total increase in their water bill. Not homeowners, but people that live in condos and a lot of Rocky Hills condos, as you know, Centrials and stuff. On the water side though, the three-quarter percent increase on your actual water bill, I mean, is excellent. But I had made calls, I called the, uh, our attorney, Chris Stone. He, he felt he could give us two hundred thousand dollar reduction in legal budget. I made a motion, I had four or five votes with me, but it failed. Uh, I mean, you had the attorney telling you, you could cut from his budget and then, uh, you know, I couldn't get the votes. We also, a week before the budget was adopted, after the last meeting, I think commissioners finally found out, because I had called a few staff people. We had sold some bonds and I believe it was approximately a six hundred thousand dollar savings. Three hundred thousand on the water side and three hundred thousand on, on your side of your bill, the town side. So they had decided the three hundred thousand on the ti- on the town side, we'd leave as a surplus for next year to help maintain a lower rate. But I made a motion to cut three hundred thousand on the water side. And again, that bill, that failed. I mean, hey, it's majority vote as it is in the council, majority of people disagreed with me. Uh, I did not go any further, but I also felt we gave Riverfront Recapture an extra six hundred thousand. As you know, in Rocky Hill, we have three parks on the river, we have Ferry Park, we have Cirilla Park, we have Buckley Park. Uh, I, you know, we, we've given Riverfront Recapture twenty-five to thirty million dollars in the last twenty-six approximately, approximately twenty-six years. And to add another six hundred thousand dollars to the budget when residents in all the towns, including Hartford, are, are hurting and every little penny matters to some people. Uh, I, I felt adding that six hundred thousand wasn't the right thing either. Again, I did not bring that up for a motion, you had, the first two motions I made had failed and I knew that would fail. But, uh, I always look, as I was once sixteen years when I served on the council, five out of six years I was finance chairman, we had no tax increase. When I was on the council, five out of six that I was, I was on sixteen years, but my last six years. So I believe, you know, there's cuts in every two hundred million dollar budget. And I, I tried to get it down to a zero percent. So, but I do agree, Chris Martin, Bud Solemy, they all did a great job and they put hours and hours into the budget. It's just, it's a political disagreement. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. I know that, um, here in Rocky Hill, Commissioner DiBella, we have a lot of exciting projects that are going to be happening along our, our, our riverfront. And, um, you know, hopefully, um, hopefully we will, we will see some of that happening in, in the next year or two.
Madam Mayor, uh, just, let me, could I just say something on Riverfront Recapture? Uh, I, I think you have Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, Hartford, East Hartford, uh, along the river. Uh, we have a committee that we put together and we are working now with Riverfront Recapture, trying to find options where that we can, we can, they can supplement their, their, uh, revenue. Uh, different options we're looking at right now and we'll be meeting on a monthly basis with Riverfront Recapture because Riverfront also feels, and I, I do too, that, uh, Weathersfield, Rocky Hill and those other river, that those riverfront parks are critical. Uh, in, in our existing situation, uh, the whole question of the, um, pandemic, uh, we've got people, enormous numbers of people using those parks in, in a time when uh, just West Hartford, our West Hartford, uh, reservoir, we have enormously number of people using those now during this pandemic. So it was my opinion, and I think the vast majority of the board that felt very strongly, that we had to open those up and keep them going, they were critical and significant to, to what, uh, what, what the general public is dealing with. And as a result, that was, uh, why the board moved to reinstate that. But we're trying to work in a broader basis, we're looking at other options, uh, in terms of Buddy Solemy, who was chairman, is the, uh, chairman of the Board of Finance, uh, is chairing that committee up, Ray's on the committee, um, and several other people that were working directly now with Riverfront to try to work something out. But I truly believe you've got Windsor expanding into the riverfront. So we're trying to get back the river, it's a critical part of the economic stra- strategy, economic development strategy for the whole region. So, um, and we've got a, a terrible situation relative to the dykes in the greater, in Hartford. And that's, uh, John Larson, I think you're gonna see a major breakthrough on the interchange, which would resolve that problem for us and open up that whole Riverfront Rec- Recapture in the terms of economic development. So we had to keep that going, it was critical to the region in general. It's not just Hartford and it's not just the park. We had enormous amount of use on that park and that's why the board basically made that decision.
Uh, Lisa.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sweets, again, if I could just, I, you know, you like talked to you and John, the town manager knows, but the other council individuals may not. I mean, maybe a month and a half, two months ago, John called me, he says, Ray, we're doing a closing on a house. I believe it was Birch Road down the project, it was a house that burnt down a couple of years ago, you guys were gonna sell it. Well, there was a attachment or a water bill that you owed us for, I don't know, fourteen hundred dollars. It was for the connection and it was never built to Rocky Hill. But John called me on a, I don't know what day it was, the very next day, it was written off, okay? I mean, the MDC, then Lisa, you called me, John called me and Ray, uh, Carpenter, I believe his name is, he called me a year ago. You had a building on West Street that was getting built and they were saying it was gonna take two months to get the permits. I had the permits for you the same day through Scott Jelsoft, I mean, thanks to Scott.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, we, we work with the manager, the whole MDC team when there's a problem or with the mayor, whether it was Mayor Kohanik, whether it was, uh, the Mayor Guerrero way back. I mean, there's not a mayor we haven't worked with to get things done. Your pool leaked one time at the, uh, Elm Ridge Park, it, you had a fourteen thousand dollar bill. They called me, the fourteen thousand dollar get bill got written off. So, you know, the MDC, most of you probably on the council don't even know we do this for you. They're small items, but there's a lot of items that the town managers and the different mayors work with, uh, commissioners and we work with staff and Chairman DiBella and get them cleaned up.
And, and that's true, that's true, uh, Madam Mayor, because I'll tell you, one of the things that it goes unwritten and turn, or unreported is Hartford Hospital had a major problem. Scott, what was it about, about eight years, nine years ago?
Yeah, it's like two thousand, two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Yeah, we had to go in because they, they had such a problem, the plumbers couldn't handle it and the, we, we went in there and resolved the, the water problem because, I mean, water to a hospital was so critical. We had to go in and, and, and actually step in to, to resolve that problem. No one ever said anything about it, nor did we ever publicize. We don't publicize hundreds of things during a year, uh, that we do that go unreported and things of that nature. So Ray's right, I mean, those are the things that happened and they happened because of cooperation between tunnel governments, city governments and, and the MDC and the commissioners.
Thank you, and we certainly look forward to learning more about those three or four possibilities of bringing in new revenue. And, um, Commissioner DiBella, I just wanna tell you that if there's anything that we can do for you as a council, um, to help further your arguments with respect to, um, you know, federal funds or anything at the state level that we are here, um, and we are, we are eager to help you.
Thank you.
All that you have done.
We appreciate that, Madam Mayor.
Um, Town Manager John Mayer, did you wanna comment or say anything before we wrap up?
I just wanted to ask Chris, um, what do you base, when you talk about thirty-five percent fund balance, what's, what do you base your thirty-five percent off of? Budget expense, actual expense?
It's, it's, um, revenues in the general fund, John. I can send you the, uh, policy if you like.
No, 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 I was just curious what you base it off of, so is your base it off of actual revenues? Okay. Uh, no, I think, uh, we covered a lot tonight, so I think I'm pretty much set for now.
Okay. Mr. Jelsoft, are, are you all set? Did you wanna add anything?
Uh, no, I, I appreciate the opportunity and, uh, and we look forward to, uh, uh, continually improving the MDC and, and, uh, I, I, I want the town of Rocky, I, I truly appreciate all of our towns in Rocky Hill uh, for everything they've done for us and, and we're, we felt it was very important this year uh, to basically, um, not so much pay you back, but to reward our, our towns with a zero percent increase uh, because of all the good things you've done for us. So, uh, we'll continue to strive to, to, uh, make ourselves better and we have lots of opportunities, uh, for that. So, uh, we're, we're, we're moving forward with, uh, improving every day.
Awesome, great. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Jelsoft, Commissioner DiBella, Commissioner Sweets, and of course, Mr. Martin and Mr. Solemy and Ms. Shane, uh, thank you for your time and for coming in. Mr. Salami and Ms. Shane. Thank you for your time and for coming in.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Bye bye.
All right. Why don't we move on to public comment? And so this portion, this portion of the meeting is specifically set aside for comments from the public who are asked to limit their comments to two minutes. Any person interested in providing public comment should email publicmeetings@rockyhillct.gov and you will be provided with a link to attend a Zoom remote meeting and instructions on how you will participate. And so we actually have a participant tonight. So, I, I don't, I can't actually see your name. I see Paul. And what is your last name for the record?
That's Paul F. Dutilio.
And your address?
I live at forty-seven Spring Brook Drive.
Okay. And so we can give you two comments, two minutes of public comment.
Absolutely. Thank you. I thought that was a very informative MDC speech. I'm an engineer myself. I appreciated all that. So let me just get right into this. I started a, well, not necessarily, Ed Chucarella and myself started a group four years ago, twenty seventeen, called Walk Bike Rocky Hill. And we wanted to identify safe streets for walking, for biking. And we had tried a lot of initiatives on our own and we, we brought a lot of people into the group. Ed started a Facebook group that we ended up bringing in a couple of other people. Louis Marara has been very helpful in this effort. We've also been out on rides with Carrie Zeps Woods and she's actually joined the group now too and has participated with us. So. In our last meeting, which we've been doing now for four years, we talked about a lot of things that we would like to do. One of the problems that we have found is that as a grassroots efforts, we're, we're really limited in what we can do. You know, there's only so much that the public can actually do without support of the town. So during the last meeting, I told them that I wanted to address this issue of safe sidewalks. And the reason I do is because where I live on Spring Brook Drive, we have a new school that came in. It's the Connecticut Engineering and Aerospace School and it's bringing a lot of traffic to Brook Street. Brook Street was never designed for this volume of traffic. It's really, we've seen an incredible influx. And the reason I was concerned is because I watch a lot of our neighbors that want to walk from the school and maybe go on to like Tropic Crossing or Tropic Crossing, that's just the only I've been here, Henkel Drive. And they want to kind of add onto the walk and go other places, but there's that small section from the new Gardner Way, which is the school to Henkel Way, that is incredibly unsafe. It has poor, I'm an engineer. I worked for the DOT for thirty-two years. So I know highway design and all that. And I just observed that the, the horizontal alignment is horrible because you don't get to see the cars coming. People are put into a narrow stretch of roadway for several hundred feet with guardrail on both sides. And it's really a dangerous situation. And so that, I brought that up and when I did, many other people chimed in and had a lot that they wanted to say. So. I said to them, well, let's, you know, let's move this forward to the town and let's see what we can do and see if the town can maybe participate in it. So with that being said, Ed posted something this weekend, I think. And about the safe sidewalk situation and Mayor, and again, I want to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. The mayor, Marata, has chimed in and she, she notified us everyone that there is a initiative called the Planning Implementation Committee. So we're really excited about that and we would really like to get all the input from the town people and we'd also like to see the effort kind of doubled or even increased, however it could be at the town, because we know we need the town planners and people to assist this effort. There's no way we can do this on our own. So I was very excited about the mayor's chiming in about this initiative. And I think that's going to be a great thing. Now, many other people want to write letters. We want to build this community. We want to make it all that it can be. And we all think that, you know, bike walk Rocky Hill is a, is a quality of life issue that all of us would love to see improvements to these types of things. It makes us a safer, better town to live in. I mean, we've got a great town here. We just have to work on some of the connectivity because there's just too many people walking. And, and we all know nowadays pedestrians are put in a very precarious situation without sidewalks because people nowadays driving and texting, there's just pedestrian accidents are up, they're up remarkably. People, I don't think really understand how, how bad the situation has gotten. Now, again, they've done a lot of things in town, but we really would like to take a close look at all the locations and, and get a prioritized list together of where we should focus our efforts. So. You know, with all that being said, I'm glad we're moving in the right direction. I'm really happy that the mayor has, has taken on this effort. We know there's a lot of shortcomings and we know this is going to take time, but we certainly like to see the town take a stronger initiative or stronger, you know, approach to, to getting some of these things addressed. So I think you guys are all doing a wonderful job. I love this town. I don't want to make any of it upset. So I'd like to just get this done in a way that everybody can be happy, again, prioritized and, and, and looking at the whole big picture. On Brook Street, there's a lot of development. There's a whole bunch of houses that didn't have sidewalks. People have to cross in areas to get to the other side of the road because of this lack of connectivity. These are the types of things we want to take care of. So I think you all know what I'm saying here. We have other members that want to write letters to the town and they may also want to participate in, in a Zoom meeting to make their point. So I'm glad that we're moving in the right direction and let's, let's do this. Let's make Rocky Hill all that it can be. It's a wonderful town. And with people getting out biking and walking more, I, I think it's really warranted that we, we take this serious and move forward. So. Again, I want to thank all of you for this opportunity to speak and I hope that we can move this forward in a very positive way. So thank you again, all of you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening and I think if you just log out, you'll be signed off.
All righty. Thanks again.
Okay. We will continue with public comment. We have a couple of letters to be read into the record. I have to give me a minute because I'm pulling them up on my cell phone from email. So I have a letter from Jacqueline Farnum. I don't have an, I see her address. Ninety-five West Street? So let me.
Yes.
Okay. I just lost it for a minute. Let me find it. Okay. Dear members of the Rocky Hill Town Council, I am writing to keep the issue of sixty West in the forefront. The skilled nursing facility for paroled criminals. As you know, it is operating less than five hundred feet from Moser School and accepting notorious pedophiles from out of state among its residents and rehabbers. Sixty West currently houses eight sex offenders and an unknown number of murderers and criminally insane who are free to come and go and even use the senior van if they want. I am requesting that the council go into executive session to discuss possible new litigation to minimize the risks sixty West poses to our children and families in this town. The town attorney could also give the town council an overview of the history of the litigation. None of the current counselors were on the council in twenty twelve when town litigation started against Secure Care. The town attorney could review the purpose of seventeen B dash three seven two A to determine if accepting out of state transitioning criminals exceeds what is allowed by this law. Only placements by Connecticut DOC or DMHAS are allowed. In the case of Wayne Chapman's care being paid for by Mass Medicaid, there is precedent case law where New York was paying for a patient in a Connecticut nursing home. And in that case, it was determined it was not allowed. I was told this, but I don't have the case documents. In this nursing home, is this nursing home allowed to accept Medicaid from Massachusetts or any other state? The town attorney could contact the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS, to see if the unusual placement of Chapman and his payments by Mass Health is contrary to CMS policies. Medicaid isn't portable from state to state and Chapman doesn't meet Massachusetts residency requirements. If it is allowed, what is to prevent Secure Care from bringing rehabbing criminals into Rocky Hill from all over the country? Another action to mitigate the risk of sixty West is to propose a new ordinance that specifically limits how close congregate housing for sex offenders can be from a school where there are children under age eighteen. Other towns have done this and Kiri Wood has agreed to look into similar state legislation. Please take action on what for many residents in this town is a very, very urgent issue. Best regards, Jacqueline Farnum, ninety-five West Street. Okay. And I believe I have one more. I'm just going to find it. Scrolling. Okay, I have another letter from a Krista Mariner. And I'm trying to get her address. Fifty-eight Farms Village Road. There seems to be an attachment, which I'm not going to read. But I will read the letter. Dear members of the town council, I would appreciate it if my letter could be read into the record as I won't be available to participate via Zoom. Since the December twenty-first, twenty twenty council meeting, I hope you have had the opportunity to watch the documentary, Have You Seen Andy? Available on Amazon Prime Video and HBO Max. I purchased it via Walmart. This documentary details the nineteen seventy-six disappearance of a ten-year-old Andy Puglisi from Lawrence, Massachusetts. The person of interest in Andy's disappearance is notorious child predator Wayne Chapman, who recently moved to sixty West after spending four decades incarcerated in Massachusetts for the brutal rape of two boys. Mr. Chapman also has multiple convictions in Pennsylvania and Rhode Island. He has admitted to assaulting over one hundred children in the United States and Canada. I examined the memorandum of decision for the town of Rocky Hill versus Secure Care Realty LLC, HHD CV thirteen six oh three seven nine four nine dash S. I have attached page two below. The facility known as sixty West was established under the authority of Connecticut General Statutes seventeen B dash three seven two A, which provides as follows. Notwithstanding any provision of the general statutes, the commissioners of social service correction and mental health and addiction services may establish or contract for the establishment of a chronic or convalescent nursing home on state-owned or private property to care for individuals who, one, require the level of care provided in a nursing home and, two, are transitioning from a correctional facility in the state, or, three, receive services from the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. A nursing home developed under this section is not required to comply with the provisions of section seventeen B dash three five two to seventeen B dash three five four inclusive. The language about a correctional facility in the state makes it a fair question perhaps for the town attorney, whether Secure Care can properly go shopping for clients from out of state. Mr. Chapman's placement was a private referral from out of state. He wasn't sent to sixty West by Connecticut DOC or DMHS. Mr. Chapman's bill is being paid by Mass Health, which is Medicaid. Mr. Chapman doesn't meet the residency requirements from Massachusetts Medicaid. And Medicaid isn't portable from state to state, to the best of my knowledge. Taking the statute one step further, it can be inferred that with, that out of state placements aren't allowed at sixty West. It's an arguable point and worthy of examination by the town attorney. I asked the council to meet with the town attorney in an executive session to discuss this angle of inquiry. It's very important that the entire council discuss the town attorney with the town attorney, the history of litigation regarding sixty West, which begins in twenty twelve. Counselor Emanuel is only three, is the only three-term counselor. His services began November two thousand fifteen. Other counselors, including Mayor Marata, were elected in two thousand nineteen and two thousand seventeen. At the council meeting on January fourth, twenty twenty-one, Mayor Marata stated that her top priority is the welfare of our residents. That includes the children of Moser School, which is located within five hundred feet of sixty West. And was mentioned at a December twenty-one council meeting. Sixty West overlooks Moser School, its playing fields, playground and school buses. At the December twenty-first council meeting, Mayor Marata asked the council whether a letter should be sent to Governor Ned Lamont. I look forward to further council deliberation on this matter. I would like Secure Care to get the message loud and clear that Rocky Hill will not sit by quietly as Secure Care accepts a patient like Mr. Chapman. They did not have to take him as a patient. Secure Care's actions show a want and disregard for the public safety and general welfare of the children of Rocky Hill. Thank you for your assistance, Krista Mariner. So I kind of feel like that was over two minutes, but you know, we will accept your letters and we would really like it if you can come and, and join us and put them into the record if you have that ability. So I think that that was it for public comment. And why don't we move on to appointments and resignations? Mr. Duff, do you have any?
We do not today.
Okay. And Mr. Sharmit, do you?
We do not, I think.
Okay. So moving on to the approval of the minutes. We have a rather thick packet. So A is the town council meeting, December twenty-first, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the December twenty-first meeting.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then B, the town council special meeting, January fourth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the town council special meeting, January fourth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Moving on to subcommittee reports, we will begin with Mr. Greenspan and Finance.
Finance. The finance committee met on January fourteenth. The town received its audit report. Our audit report contained an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion the auditors can give on our comprehensive annual financial report as well as our federal and state single audit reports. The report was from Bloom Shapiro, which has now become, which is now known as CLA, Clifton Larson Allen. They'll continue to be working with the same auditors going forward. We received some information on FEMA. Our twenty twenty-one reimbursements are going to be less than were originally expected as the Board of Education expenses were deemed not qualified by FEMA. So that's just something to keep in mind. We'll keep up to date as that continues to go forward, but that, it wasn't our expenses in particular, it's just those type of expenses have been disallowed. The state aid, we received our Massentucket Pequot grant for seventy-one thousand dollars. Our monthly revenue and expenses were relatively, were in line as well as our legal expenditures. However, we do just need to keep an eye on a few items within our budget. Due to historically low interest rates, our interest income is much shorter, is going to have a shortfall compared to what was budgeted. To date, we've used eighty-seven percent of our contingency and that's mostly related to retirements. People that have sick days or time coming to them comes out of that budget. And we still have expenses for COVID nineteen on both the town and Board of Education sides. So we just got to keep an eye on things as, as we move forward. The, the town manager, acting finance director is well aware and is looking at options in those areas where we may have shortfalls. And that concludes the finance report. Our next meeting is February eleventh at six PM.
So that's your Happy New Year address to us?
That's the Happy New Year.
Government Ops.
Great. Government Operations met on January fourth. I'll just give a few of the highlights. One was regarding the generator far station three. That's been a, a problem area for a while and it's cost prohibitive to fix it at this point. So we are getting estimate replace it. The good news is between natural gas and diesel, natural gas looks like it's going to be actually a little less expensive than diesel. And that is the preferred route to go. So hopefully that will all work and should go to bid process. Mainly by the time we're, tonight's meeting, they may be starting the bid process now. They told us a couple of weeks ago, we had our meeting. So it's probably just getting started. They told us a couple of weeks ago, we had our meeting, so it's probably just getting started. Just a couple of things, there was trying to talk between the Board of Ed and the Booster Club, I think for football, to put up an electronic sign at the high school. The zoning rejected it for now, and I think Board of Ed is trying to find maybe an alternate plan to put some sort of electronic signage up there. So no details as to what those may be at this point. With regards to the community senior center, I believe yesterday there was a brief shutdown at Town Hall for power as they were tying in certain things like the sprinkler system and other things such as that yesterday. And lastly, the audit, we should begin the audit engagement letter soon with regards to our final reimbursement for the Rocky High School renovation is new project. So that's kind of the first step in getting our final reimbursement there. Hopefully, Moser will follow suit not too far after that. Our next, our next meeting is Monday, February 1st.
Thank you. Public Safety?
Sure, Public Safety met this evening at 5:30. Fire reported that there were 58 new incidents that they had to respond to, bringing their year-to-date total of 626. Still averaging 18 members per call average to a call, so that's great. They are just shy of their five-year average of 666 incidents. Training hours were at 210, bringing the year-to-date total of training hours to 3,806. Two firefighters are, zero firefighter injuries, but there's a total of two for the year. 19% of the calls or 120 fire calls for the year were recorded. We did have one vehicle enter the Connecticut River on December 22nd with one, one person inside, that person escaped the vehicle. And it was a three-department rescue. Police were there quickly, fire got there and started the rescue. They did deploy the Zodiac, they did enter the river. The currents, the ice and everything necessitated one of the firefighters in full gear to get into the water. So he did, and he rescued the driver. And that ambulance was right there to take him to the hospital and he's out doing, doing well. So that, kudos to the departments for that water rescue, cold water rescue. Regarding the Fire Marshal inspection, building, commercial building inspections are down, but they still are getting due to COVID, but they are still getting inspection activity done. Fire Marshal assisted the town in getting its first pop-up COVID testing at Elm Ridge Park completed, the first one. And the second one is coming up on January 25th. This is a COVID pop-up testing center in Elm Ridge Park. It is not the rapid test, it is the PCR test. No appointments are required to show up starting at 8:30 AM and running through 1:30 PM. As for ambulance, 394 calls, 81 members still going, one COVID case in the department. All things are stable and running well in ambulance. Police, they have two vacancies, they have one hired, they have two in the pipeline for February and one recent notice of retirement, but for February will be at full force for police staffing. As for their report, year-to-date, 2,876 service calls, 13 criminal arrests, 38 motor vehicle accidents, 22 infractions issued, 12 warnings issued, and 189 hours of training. Emergency management is also assisting in the pop-up COVID organization of those pop-up COVID testing centers in Rocky Hill. They are applying for grants, they have applied for a thousand dollar grant or or help with vaccination sites when the vaccine gets to Rocky Hill. And they gave us the Connecticut. So now that we're in Phase 1B, if you want to call to get an appointment, you would call the number 877-918-7224. That is the Connecticut COVID assistance appointment line. So it's a line to help assist you in getting your appointment. Central Health District reported that they are concerned about the vaccine in that they're hoping that they'll be able to get the doses when they're ready, but they are in the process of getting set and organizing for that effort. I'm trying to give you the latest Rocky Hill number, excuse me. I seem to have misplaced it. I'll have to come back if I find it, sorry about that. All right, that wraps up the Public Safety meeting report. And our next meeting is February 16th at 5:30.
Thank you, thank you. Senior Liaison?
Senior Liaison met on December 28th. The Community Center project is still on schedule. The only concern at this point is potentially getting some building supplies in as we move forward due to delays from COVID. Just, we don't know what to expect yet, so we're being very optimistic. Due to COVID, AARP will not be doing their tax help program this year. They won't be able to have the public meetings. We will be looking to see if there's any other organizations that may be offering virtual help with taxes for those that need it. Also with the new senior center coming online, hopefully late summer, there's going to be a need for some volunteers, both in staffing the cafe within the fitness center. And we're still looking for individuals that may have specific skills or knowledge and be willing to teach classes in their area of expertise. So they could reach out to Denise or Melissa at Human Services if anybody's interested in doing so. Our next meeting is the 22nd of February at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Land Acquisition and Farmland Preservation?
We did not meet, no report. We are on a new schedule, so we are not meeting the same night as councils, or our meeting is actually next Tuesday, January 26th. That's 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Liaison to the State Representative and the State Senator?
No report.
School Liaison?
No reported this time, though.
Thank you. Capital Improvements Committee?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. And Economic Development Subcommittee?
No meeting, no report.
Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda, seeing none, we'll go to old business discussion, possible action of the Community Senior Center.
Thank you. Let's see, the soil preparation and compaction for the paved areas have been tabled until the spring. They're actually starting to work on installing the playground equipment. The ductwork mains are being installed with the branch lines. Insulation progressing well. Roof curbs are set and the new HVA units are installed. The older units are being removed and the openings are being patched. Interior walls are being insulated and closed. Let's see, masonry work continues on all elevations. Plumbing roughens at the new bathrooms have been installed and inspected. Electrical in-wall installations have been inspected. Ceiling rough is ongoing. And that was about it. Also, I did take a tour of the construction site on Friday afternoon. And a lot of what you see on the plan documents that we've been looking at for the past year or two are actually coming into place. You can walk through and actually go in and see the rough-out portion of the Human Services Office space with the frames being put in and they're starting to put the sheet rock up. So it's moving along quite well. Again, hopefully it will stay on target. It's a little different type of project because it's a GC. And what I've been told is the GC is cert. Trying to complete and get a letter of occupancy around the middle of June. Once they get their letter of occupancy, then we'll start bringing in the furniture and some of the audio visual stuff and the exercise equipment. So that will take a few more months, weeks and so on, so. And we're looking at hopefully having building pretty much up and available sometime late summer to early fall at the time being. I guess the next, there's a couple, next two weeks are some key installations, probably the finishing of the HVA, HVAC equipment and so on, that could also determine how the project is progressing. But for now, I think we're in pretty good shape, still subject to delays caused by COVID. We'll see how that goes. And then they did have the power cut off yesterday. It went semi-successfully. They were replacing a switch. And I guess they were missing some parts that they needed because I guess they're putting in a larger switch to handle the electricity flow. So I believe they're going to have to schedule another power cutoff. But it did allow them to do some work while the building was empty and shut down as far as some of the fire suppression connections and so on, so. That's pretty much how Senior Center stands at the moment.
Excellent, thank you. Now, moving on to Section A, Discussion of Possible Action, Sustainable Connecticut. So in your packet, you have a couple of pages about Sustainable Connecticut. And essentially what I wanted to do was make a recommendation to the council this evening that we invite this organization, which is a nonprofit, to come in and make a presentation to us. This is an organization that was developed in 2016 about that timeframe with the assistance of CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. And basically, it's a resource, a substantial resource for municipalities who are looking to improve upon environmentally friendly and innovative initiatives for their towns. There are currently 116 communities that are registered with Sustainable Connecticut. And I wrote here, 61 are currently certified as a green town. I think it would be interesting for us to explore becoming a certified green town. And Sustainable Connecticut makes that very easy because they have what they refer to as a roadmap of suggestions. And you essentially pick out things that you're interested in. So for Counselor Thoreau and I, that would probably look at like sustainable materials management. And you can earn credit for that. And the beauty of it is that there's a match program that they have. So anything that we decide to work on, whether it's through economic development or sustainable materials management, I've done a bunch, inclusive engagement, open space and preservation. We can sort of decide what we want to do and then check off those boxes as we do it with our membership with Sustainable Connecticut. And we could be receiving funding for our efforts, which, you know, we can certainly use at this point. There is no fee to becoming a member of this nonprofit. However, it does require a resolution, but don't panic because there is a template and we don't have to draft the language. We can just look at it and sign off and all we are agreeing to is that, you know, we want to be a sustainable community, we want to put our best foot forward and not leave a footprint, right? So I know that we did have a student come a while back and ask us to look into a resolution about climate change and specifically to gain the governor's ear. And I know that the governor has worked very hard in this area, particularly over the past couple of months. And so sort of running concurrently with what Counselor Thoreau and I are doing on see, I always get the letters wrong, CCSMM for trash and recycling. The governor has been doing through what he calls the Governor's Council on Climate Change, which we look at as GC3. And so he's been putting out working groups and talking about different ways that the state can improve and making recommendations. So I think that, you know, the state is in a good place in that respect. Certainly has the governor's intention. And I think, you know, here in Rocky Hill, it would be good if we gave some local attention to what we can do on our own, so. I'm hoping, John, that we can find a time in February to have a quick presentation and see what the council thinks. And then in terms of, does anyone have any questions? I'm sorry.
The only question I had, so we're going to have, just in terms of logistics, we would have them present. And then if we think it sounds promising, that's the event where we would pass a resolution to move forward, we don't need to have the resolution to have them present, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Okay, anyone else? And then item B, under New Business Discussion, Possible Action, the 2020, 2021 Budget Schedule. And I believe there was some discussion amongst the caucuses about changing some dates potentially. So I don't know if someone wants to speak to that?
I could jump in, I should have mentioned this was also approved by Finance. And the original schedule was put together with the help of the town manager. The anticipation of doing it this early, which is a little bit ahead of schedule for us, was to do it because the anticipation is we'll be probably having our meetings virtual. So that's the intent, is to plan as a virtual meeting. What is in the packet, there was two changes noted. Counselor Prakash had some conflicts on April 20th and April 28th. And I don't believe anybody had objections with changing that to April 22nd and April 29th, which would be a Thursday and a Thursday.
Okay, so will we reissue a new notice?
Do we need a new notice, or could we just make an adjustment to the existing schedule?
Yeah, if we can just inform Counselor Emanuel. Okay, that's good.
April 20th is the 22nd. And April 29th, 28th is April 29th.
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect. Any questions, comments? Okay, let's move on then to the mayor's report. I just have three quick updates. I just have three quick updates. Just pulling off the current information off the state's database portal, ct.gov with respect to COVID. And I just wanted to give you some cumulative totals since the onset of the pandemic, specific to Rocky Hill. And so we had, in terms of folks, one thousand two hundred and fifty-three. We have total deaths of one hundred and six. The number of tests were up to, as of yesterday, thirty thousand eighty-six. And the number of positive test results, one thousand five hundred and thirty. So I think as Deputy Mayor Sharmit mentioned, we are currently in Phase One B. So if you are seventy-five and older, you can sign up. Now you can register for your vaccine, but the governor is asking for you to be patient because there are some anticipated delays with respect to actually getting your appointment scheduled. But the good news is that we're moving forward and there's a light at the end of the tunnel. But we just want to make sure that we exercise caution getting to that end of that tunnel. So it still really is imperative that everyone continues to wear their mask and wash their hands and watch their distance. And even after you get your vaccine, the recommendation is that you continue to do those things because at this point, we really just don't know whether there is a potential for someone to carry the virus and then spread it. So so, you know, good news moving forward on that front. I wanted to give you an update on the Foundry. So there had been some uncertainty with respect to the layout of the project. And so some of that was getting worked out, which required going back and getting certain approvals. And it was ultimately determined that the original plan that had four buildings would be scaled back to three buildings. And so the plan moving forward is that there will be three buildings. And in lieu of that fourth building, there will now be seven townhouses. And so the next steps, which are anticipated to happen by late spring, which is really right around the corner when you think about it, is the asbestos remediation will begin. And that will be done under the guidance of the Department of Public Health. Then taking down the Caruso auto body building as well as the canopy, which exists at the south end of the property. And then removing some of the underground storage tanks that are in existence. And then they will commence soil remediation. And most excitingly, they will begin marketing the townhouses. So I've actually been getting calls about that. So I was excited to talk about that with folks today on the phone. And I know that Attorney Romano gets calls about that. So, you know, that looks like it's moving forward. I mean, we'll meth on wood, right? Because we always hear positive news and then kind of gets delayed. But and then the last update I want to give you is connecting to the river and around town. And so I think one of the things that would bring us all tremendous joy, as we heard, you know, in the beginning in public comment, is being able to develop, you know, the sidewalk system and bike path system. And particularly in being able to sort of move traffic from the Silas Dean and not vehicle traffic, but, you know, pedestrian and incorporate our Town Hall campus and the Community Senior Center and the Ames Development and kind of just snake down to the river and make that a great space for folks as well as finding other areas in town where we can improve on sidewalks. I know that our staff does work diligently, does have a master plan. And from time to time, we do receive grant money, which enables us to make some amazing connections. But I want you guys to know, it certainly has been a priority for my administration to sort of get this ball rolling. And so for the past several months, I've been speaking with developers and speaking with members, mayors and experts in other towns to see what they're doing. Certainly, this Sustainable Connecticut project would be a benefit to us in this regard and looking at how do we improve connectivity. And I've also asked the Plan Implementation Committee to get involved as well as staff so we can start looking at what is called a Complete Streets Plan. So all of that is underway. It's a very exciting opportunity for us, but it does have many components and challenges and prerequisites. It's not going to happen overnight, and certainly there will be public input. But I want to encourage everyone, if you want to know more about what's going on in this particular area, or if you want to participate in those conversations, probably most importantly, the way to do that is to go to the PIC meetings. So I'm going to give you the schedule. They meet every other month, and their next meeting is Wednesday, February third at six P M. And those meetings are via Zoom until further notice. So that really is the best way for folks to get their ideas out there to the people who are in charge of this. And there are plenty of staff on that PIC committee specific to this project. And that's it. So thanks for listening. And we will move to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. We got a report from Simple Recycling or Pink Bag for December. We see they collected five hundred and twenty-three pounds of clothes. But remember how they suspended their operations starting December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty? So it's pretty much on hiatus until we hear otherwise. But we did collect five hundred plus pounds in December. Trying to put into context all this talk about the COVID vaccination and so on. The governor of the state released, had a press conference and released some some more, what makes up Phase One B? So currently in Phase One B, you can schedule to get a vaccination if you're over the age of seventy-five. The next one coming up likely in the beginning of February will be individuals sixty-five to seventy-five. Then after that, probably late February, early March, is frontline essential workers and individuals with underlying medical conditions who have an increased risk of severe illness. So I think that essential workers would tie into the teachers as well as some of the town employees that are essential that we need them, like the Highway Department and the custodial staff and so on. But as at the moment, we're there in giving out, people over seventy-five can make an appointment. They need to probably do get appointment to, in order to get a vaccination. So currently, the state is getting between forty and forty-five thousand doses per week for the vaccinations. Mark Zito and myself, we met with Charlie Brown over the, this morning. And we were discussing sites in Rocky Hill where the Health District could start administering vaccinations once they get them and so on. So this Thursday, the Health District's going to go and look at the high school and perhaps Moesha School as well as possible places where we could to administer the vaccinations. They need a large space because after giving the vaccination to the patient, they generally have to stay around fifteen minutes to to a half an hour to see if there's any reaction to the to the vaccination and so on. So again, hopefully, we can get something set up here in Rocky Hill in the coming weeks. And then also a lot depends on when the Health District places orders in how many vaccinations doses they do get. And then most likely, that will have to be divided among the four Health District towns. As I say, now, if any of the seventy-five-year-old people that want to get a vaccination, Ed gave the hotline number for the state. Also, like Yukon Medical Center, as well as Hartford Healthcare, do have numbers that you can call as well. But if there's any questions or information they need, they can they can call Human Services and ask for help and so on. I do believe we're maintaining a list so that if the Health District does start giving out vaccinations, we do have people on the list that we can sign them up. So if anybody has a question, they can call the Health, Human Services at eight six zero two five eight two seven nine nine. Switching gears over to the state, seems like the state has some money and they're going to be doing some studies and reviews and rehabilitations. The first one I found out about is the state's going to start a statewide streetlight study. I guess analyzing the lights, how bright they are, how well they project lights to the street and the sidewalk. So I think Rocky Hill's going to be one of the first towns that they'll be doing the, start the study in. Also, the town staff was contacted by D O T that they determined that the Silas Dean from Pratt Street down to Horizon Commons is fit for what they call a road diet, which they would come in and do a do a study and come up with conceptual plans to try to reduce the the road, the travel portion of the road by vehicles down to maybe three lanes and use the other two lanes to, for other types of transportation, bikes, bike riding, walking and so on. So they're going to, the D O T is going to be doing a, coming up with some conceptual plans in the coming months. And when they do have it complete, probably present it to the Public Safety to see what they think about. And then the other big project they got going on is they're going to rehabilitate the the swing bridge, I believe, in East Adam. But that's going to start probably not until two thousand and twenty-two. Last week, I was in on a Zoom meeting with neighboring town managers, Weathersfield, Newington, Berlin and Cromwell, as well five towns that's beginning their budgets. So we agreed to meet next month to go over areas that we see that we may be able to do some shared services with. So the other thing, we did get some good news last week that the President did declare that Tropical Storm Isa back in August as a, September was it? As a federal major disaster declaration. So therefore, hopefully, that a lot of our expenses will qualify for FEMA reimbursement. So say we're taking down the trees and so on. So we hopefully don't get seventy-five percent of some of those expenses. But we can't really count on it because FEMA's a moving target as far as what's reimbursable. And then the last item is the Board of Ed should be releasing the Superintendent's Budget sometime this week. So you hopefully will get copies so you have something to do this weekend. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Still there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
For a second? All in favor? All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.